... at Regional School District School Committee to order.
I would like to call the Board of Selectmen meeting on September 18th to order.
Great, and we will stand with the flag of regents. Flag of regents.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to announce that this meeting is being recorded by NRSD in conjunction with Templeton Community TV, TCTV, and it's provided to Templeton and Phillipston Cable Access TV, and I always like to plug their YouTube channel, and it's out on Facebook, so everyone can go find this. The first two items on our agenda are jointly, one with both Boards of Selectmen from Phillipston and Templeton, and one is an item jointly with the Templeton Select Board. I would like to just put out, if it would be okay if we just switched the order of them. I had, second was the appointment of the Templeton rep to the Monachuset Regional Vocational Technical School Committee, and it should only take hopefully about forty-two seconds, so I thought we could get that out of the way and then jump into the next discussion, if that's okay with everybody out there?
Yes, that's fine.
Alright, so with that being said, I'll throw it out to Diane if you want to go ahead and let us know who your appointment is. I do want to just discuss the way that the regional agreement from Monty Tech is written, that says that the member shall be appointed from each town by majority vote of the members of the Board of Selectmen, the Town Moderator, and local school committee members. I read local school committee members to be local to the municipality that the representative is going to support, so to me that means it would be our Templeton representatives. That is the understanding that everyone has, or is it the entire school committee? I read it as the local. I don't know if there's any...
I read it as the locals.
Absent language, to the contrary, I would consider that to be the five persons present.
Okay, perfect, I just wanted to make sure we were on the same page, so with that, clarification made, I will throw it over to yourselves to go ahead and let us know who the appointment is, and we can go.
Okay, so our appointment is John Columbus, who is here, and I will accept a motion for Mr. Columbus to be the representative to the Monachuset Regional Vocational Technical School Committee.
I make a motion to appoint John Columbus as the representative to the Monachuset Regional Vocational Technical School Committee.
Second. I have a first and I have a second. Do you have to...
No, I think that motion carries for all of the voting members, so...
Okay, so I have a first and I have a second. Jeff, how do you vote?
No.
Terry, how do you vote?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Our Templeton members, Ms. Mattson?
Is there discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there any discussion? I'm sorry, I forgot.
I was just wondering what happened to Mr. Gilbert?
I'm sorry, Lori, I'm hearing a parrot, and I can't hear you.
What happened to Mr. Gilbert?
I'm not sure.
He indicated that he was willing to continue, but if there was someone else that would grow and deserve, he would just not continue.
Oh, okay.
That's it.
Alright.
The only interest that we had was Mr. Columbus.
I vote yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And actually, it's just three members here from Templeton, so...
So, that's all?
Yep.
Okay, and that is a one no vote, and one, two, three, four, five guess votes. So, the motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Yes, congratulations, John.
Thank you, John, thank you.
Great, that's been on...
Thank you for making that call to order.
Yes, and I know that's been, we've been trying to get that on the agenda for probably a month and a half, so I'm glad that that one's been addressed. The next item up is the district-wide town meeting moderator selection. We were informed by council that since this is a new meeting, we dissolved the last one, we would need to come together again and appoint a moderator. We're here to facilitate the process, it's the two boards of selectmen, whoever is present, so there's five members of the select boards here, will vote on who that candidate is. So, I guess I'll just start it by throwing out if someone had a motion for someone, and then you guys can kind of take it from there.
I make a...
I was gonna say, we were going to make a motion that the Templeton moderator refused for this meeting since...
Unfortunately, we have reached out to Derek, and he has not responded. And it's also our belief, because he is on the police force, that he would refuse himself due to budget cuts and the school budget. That is, that is a couple of our beliefs, and I'm not sure if that's why he hasn't responded, or he has to work that evening. So, Jeff, did you want to speak?
I'm calling a motion for Jennifer.
I wish he was here, he was out sick today, and I know he thought Templeton's would, so I don't want to speak for him.
Because I'm so tired.
I see if you turn around, maybe Mrs. Foley might have some insight.
I got an email from him this morning, and he said he was ill today, and he said to let everybody know he does not wish to do more.
He does not wish to do more.
My email was just that he's not here.
And I had spoken with him, and he thought, like we discussed last time, we all today, but he said he wasn't really interested.
Well, unfortunately, that leaves us in a bit of a quandary, because everyone that we've reached out to has either not responded, or is not willing to serve.
My last moderator, Tim Hayley, declined last time, so I did not reach out to him again, because I thought I'd probably be the same reason.
Now, I mean...
That's a thesis and a pickle.
Yeah, I mean, the good news is, is we have up until the meeting starts to get this done, but the bad news is, is we're a week away, and we really need to at least give someone the timeline, especially if our two primary moderators obviously aren't able to, or want to. We need to ensure that whoever does it obviously has the right skills and experience.
Shouldn't ask John Columbus, although he was here.
Actually, somebody did, and I don't think he was interested.
Does it have to be somebody within our towns, or can it be somebody from outside?
I'm sorry, Lori?
Does it have to be someone within our town, or can it be someone from out of town?
I'm clear.
It could be anybody, anybody.
Never, never, I would face this before, so I wouldn't even want to hazard a guess.
Yep, it is, it could be anybody. There's no designation in law or in the CMR that's written about it that says it needs to be a member of the town. Let me say, they're concerned, they just need to know how to moderate a town meeting.
Really have to do more searching. I mean, at this moment, I just texted Chairman Curry, and I said that Mr. Flynn said that he did not wish to do it. I do not know if Mr. Henshaw would be willing. I would have to call him and speak to him, he said last time he did not. I don't want to appoint someone and then have them say no, and we would have to reconvene again anyway. I don't know, do we have time to come back together? I mean, at this point, I don't know who to even appoint. I mean, I hate to sound that way, but we really have not, we don't, everyone we've asked has not responded, or...
Did Mr. Henshaw say he couldn't or wouldn't?
Mr. Henshaw said he could not last year, I mean...
He hasn't reached out this time. Not allowed to reach out to people when they get to a meeting.
So, do we want to...
Is there any way I can step out of the room, try to call?
Yeah, sure, sure.
Does anyone have Mr. Henshaw's number? Do you, John?
Yes.
Can we schedule a meeting like fifteen minutes before to appoint?
I was gonna say, with the options that we have, if we could certainly schedule another meeting to meet as a group, and that could be done up until, you know, at six-thirty the night, the night before, which would give us time. I'd hate to do that if we can come up with something, but...
I need to do that as well.
Ms. Jersey?
I just want to say you're absolutely correct. The only thing is, if you have some sense of who it might be, and if they have some sense of what they want their deals to be, if we knew those ahead of time, I can get them up on the web, and if there is, so that people know if they like to approve, and whatever's gonna be.
John Henshaw's, I don't have his number, I have an email. I do not have his number. I mean, that would be the person I need to ask. Other than that, I mean, I would have to again scour around, I hate to use that word, scour, I would have asked a town, and see if there's anyone else who's either had it before, or is willing and understands how to be a moderator, I mean, need someone that understands the gravity of that position. I mean, they run the entire meeting.
Right.
What about Mr. Quatro?
Mr. Quatro, what about Mr. Quatroke?
Mr. Clark?
No, Quatroke?
Debbie, he's eighty-seven.
He's eighty-seven, oh, okay, didn't know.
I mean, not, just, that's a heavy job for...
He just handles himself well at meetings.
He does.
He does.
I mean, one of the other...
Excuse me, the only reason I said that aloud was, he said it to your meeting, he did announce how old he was there, so that's the reason I felt like I could say it. Because otherwise, I don't want somebody saying how old I am.
I mean, another option would be to look outside of the two towns. I know that Dr. Kazimant lives in a local community, I don't know if you have any familiarity with the moderator in the town of Winchenden, that, again, just trying to find someone who may want to do it. I see, Mrs. Charity, you have...
I found a phone number online for John Henshaw, looks like a home phone number. I don't want to yell it out, but...
So, I would say, do we want to take just like a five-minute recess and see if we could reach out?
I just asked Mike Curry if he had John Henshaw's phone number, and I definitely tried to call him, and I was looking through my email to see if I had...
Vicki has it.
Alright, so we'll take a five-minute recess, so it is five forty-three, we'll come back here about five forty-eight, five forty-nine, so if we can hit the camera off, and we'll... You ready? Alright, so we're back from our... We're back from our recess, so it looks like we may have a motion on the floor, so let's go ahead and see.
Yes, so I spoke with Mr. Henshaw, and he will be moderator, so I will entertain a motion for John Henshaw to be moderator at the joint town meeting on September twenty-fifth at seven o'clock.
Second.
I have first and second. Do I have any discussion? Okay, so Jeff, how do you vote?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
And I vote yes as well, so that's unanimous.
Awesome, so we have a moderator, so we'll enter for our minutes, which we are required to keep for this, that John Henshaw will be our moderator for next Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, meeting at seven o'clock. So, awesome. With having no other business tonight for both boards of selectmen, the school committee will take a five-minute recess to allow the boards to go ahead and adjourn, and do whatever else, and then they can stay or leave, but we'll take another quick five-minute recess. So, thank you.
So, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Selectmen meeting on September twenty-fifth.
Make a motion, the Templeton Board of Selectmen to adjourn.
Who is that?
Second.
I have...
Okay, we're adjourned.
And we will recess until about five fifty-five. How does that sound?
Yeah, it's good.
Okay, great, just let me get up. Okay, we have come back from our recess, just a quick recap, we do have a moderator for our district-wide town meeting next Wednesday, September twenty-fifth, seven o'clock, so that's been taken care of, so our next order of business, let's see, approval of meeting minutes of August fourteenth, I would entertain a motion from someone to accept the minutes.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have a second? And I have a second, so I have a motion and a second on approving the minutes of the school committee meeting from Wednesday, August fourteenth. Any discussion or comments on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and that would be unanimous. The second order of housekeeping is, I would entertain a motion for approval of meeting minutes from August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
So, I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes of August twenty-seventh, twenty nineteen. Any questions or comments on the minutes? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, passed unanimous. Next order of business are bills and payroll. I would entertain a motion to accept the bills and payrolls, payroll warrants as presented. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I do have a second, any discussion? Comments, no, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, passed unanimously. Alright, I am going to pass this over to Dr. Kazimant, this is always an exciting time, where we get to meet our new staff, whoever could make it this evening, so...
Yes, thank you, Sharon. So, we had a very busy summer of hiring, and what I, what I've learned to do is not try to remember all the names, and all the, or where they, where they might be right off the bat, so what I've done is I've invited the building principals, whom, who are very happy to come here tonight, they will nod improvidently, that's it.
Do we need to swing the camera over to the...
That's it, that's it. It's my pleasure, we'll just kind of start, you know, kind of the oldest to the youngest, so to speak, so I will start with the high school first, Ms. Fassell, and I know that she has quite a few folks here, including a new VP, so I know Ms. Fassell will come down, and I would absolutely love... So, you could just stand maybe, or whatever, but yeah, yeah.
So, you mean, just stand here, bring them down?
I think probably just close to the mic, just so that way they could hear you, would be awesome.
There's not another chair here.
You're right.
I know there's not another chair.
So, I'll start, well, thank you very much, first of all, for having us, and thank you very much for maintaining the positions that we did rehire, and I'll tell you the same thing that I told our faculty on the first day, that when we left here in June, that one of the last things I said, and I'll never do this again, was, "I can't believe we're not doing any interviewing this summer, I can't, this is wonderful." And then all of a sudden, about the middle of July, the, you know, heavens opened up, so here we are. So, I'm very happy to introduce our new assistant principal, Mr. Colby Young. He attended University of New Hampshire, and also Boston University, he taught at High Tech High out in California, he also taught at Framingham High School, and he did an internship at Marlborough High School, and he's originally from Ridge, New Hampshire, right?
New Hampshire.
Yeah, so we're very happy to have, so I'll let him tell a little bit about himself.
Sure, well, I just want to say thank you very much for the opportunity, I'm really excited to be here, the kids are wonderful, I know I'm preaching to the choir a little bit, but, you know, I'm proud to be here, I'm excited to be here, and just really grateful for the opportunity, and just want to say thanks to the school committee for everyone's support.
You're welcome. Welcome. Thank you. Then we have, in our math department, we have Mr. Raul Laborde, he is a veteran teacher, and we're very fortunate to have someone with his math skills. Mr. Laborde, you welcome to come down. He went to UMass, and also did graduate work at Stanford out in California, and both areas were in electrical engineering, and I know for a fact that that's a difficult one, my brother started out in that, had to, had to drop down to something a little bit lower. So, we're very fortunate to have someone as skilled as Mr. Laborde, he taught at St. Bernard's High School, as well as St. John's, and was a student at St. John's, so I'll let him tell a little bit about himself also.
You didn't warn me about this part.
He can tell everything.
Thank you very much for joining me, you, this is my tenth day or whatever here, I think, Bruce County?
The seniors are.
It's twelve days, actually.
Thank you for being here, don't ever change your path, cross the paths in the hallway. Seven different journeys here, an old, very old friend of mine, back in seventh grade, sort of pointed me in this direction, I'm very grateful to her. My wife Barbara had an oak ham, twenty-five years in the smidge, so it's a wonderful commute for me, I'm glad to be up here.
Thank you. You're not gonna tell them about your puppies?
Back in nineteen ninety-nine, he started volunteering with Needs in Princeton, serving, raising service dog puppies. We're at now fifteen, Poodle number seven, who belongs to an agency in Westminster called American Poodles at work, our last seven of the Poodles. It took Needs several years to get us to take Poodles, because in our, like, Pools were that thing in the dog, oh, no, it's, it's a Poodle, it's a name, it was that thing in the show ring that gave us shivers, we finally said yes, and Marcus was, Marcus is an, in case you don't know, Pools were hunting dogs, retrieval dogs, they are very athletic, too intelligent, and our current Gallifrey, somebody in the crowd recognize the word Gallifrey? Thank you, one, Gallifrey is Dr. Booms Hold, and we did not name Gallin, he's been with us for seven years, of his eight, and he belongs to APo, but he will be with us for the rest of his life, he works as a demo dog, we were, we spent this last Saturday at the abilities export in Boston, with him demonstrating some services, I can't believe he's answering people's questions.
And he's offered to be able to bring the service dogs in possibly, for something for school?
He and Barbara should do...
School visits.
Do therapy work, and hospice work.
I think I have a lot of things to say. Alright, excellent, well, welcome. Thank you. Yeah, thank you. I wanted to get the puppies in there, because I thought that was pretty interesting. So, joining our special education department is Mr. John Lashua, some of you may know John, he's actually a graduate of Narragansett Regional High School, and he actually went to Worcester State University, just started his master's program, has passed his Intel for History and Social Studies, and is transitioning at this time to special ed, and he's working really hard on that, he's coaching with our football team, and he's taking on our man-up group this year, so we're pretty excited to have John joining us.
Want me to share?
So, what year did you graduate in?
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen.
Twenty fourteen, yes, another Narragansett alum, so on a familiar basis, I was happy to get the opportunity to interview, I was ecstatic when I got the position, my first classroom, my first year teaching, I was extremely, am extremely excited, my graduate program's at AIC in Springfield, where hopefully about a year and a half, I'll be a school counselor, so that's, that's the end goal, that's what I would like to do.
Welcome, now plug the football team.
Come see us on Friday. I'm the most loyal student in six years, so I would be...
Wow, I didn't realize that.
I did, I remember, I'm a little...
Is this like a revenge match?
Absolutely.
Welcome.
So, we do have two other new teachers that, I thought Mr. Saron was gonna be here, he's our new Spanish teacher, and I gotta tell you, looking for a really good Spanish teacher has its difficulties, but I feel like that we're really fortunate that we found the gentleman that we found, he's originally from Ecuador, so he is a native speaker, he taught most recently at Monachuset High School, and he is very excited to be here, he coaches soccer at a different district, we're hoping maybe we'll get him in with us, he sort of came in to us in the eleventh hour, he actually has, is part of a Peruvian flute band, he actually played music during his interview, which we were all very excited about, he said he uses music when he's teaching like the vocabulary in class, so I think that will be very interesting for our students, and he and Ms. Chase have been working really hard together, we were actually able, it just happened to work out, that they actually have common planning time together this year, so that's working out really well, really well also, in the past, we haven't been able to make that work for like the, any of the special areas, so we're really happy that that's working out, and he just, he brings a nice vibe to the classroom, you go into his classroom, and the kids are all attentive, and they seem like they're really enjoying the class, so we're real happy to have him. It was a loss, you know, losing Mr. DRC, so I'm glad we found somebody that was able to come in and do a nice job. We also have Mr. David Larson, who joined our science department, he's teaching three science classes for the high school, and two project lead the way classes for the middle school, and, you know, and he, got a lot to be said for being young, because he bounces up and down between upstairs and downstairs like it's, you know, no problem whatsoever, and he's, he's doing a fantastic job, and the kids are really connecting with him, he came to us from Murdoch, and I told him that he came here because he got tired of losing at Murdoch, so I did tell him I was gonna say that, too, so we're, he could not be here tonight, he's actually started his master's program, and he's at Worcester State tonight, actually, for a class, so he sends his regrets, but I'm sure you'll get to meet him, and he'll be around, so thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
So, going in order, of course, I believe, I didn't say that.
I hope you're clarifying student.
My student age, of course, otherwise it would be...
We have five new hires at the middle school this year, three of whom were able to be here for tonight, we had someone who was not because of family commitment, and that is Mr. Robert Pack, who joins us from Pittsburgh, and he is a seventh-grade math teacher, so he's joined our seventh-grade team. Along with him, we were also very lucky to see, to get the people you see before you, because as Mrs. Fassell said, we were also not anticipating hiring a lot, and we ended up getting some very good people approached over the summer from other districts. So, starting on the end here, this is Ms. Jaclyn White, she is our sixth-grade, new sixth-grade math teacher, first position, newly graduated, I'll let Jaclyn say a couple things about herself, and her start here at Narragansett.
I just graduated Pittsburgh State in December of two thousand eighteen, and then I did a couple long-term subpositions, and now I'm here with my own classroom, I'm super excited.
Next to Jaclyn, this is Dana Margarita Dixon, she's joined us in our special ed department in seventh, on the seventh grade team as well, Dana joins us from Leominster, Dana?
Yeah, hi, I'm Dana Margarita, I go by Miss Margarita, I, just easier, so, I, so I previously, this is my sixth year doing special ed, I previously worked in Leominster and Gardner School Districts, so, you know, I'm really excited to be part of the Gansett community, and kind of that smaller town, so feel, I guess, so I'm really excited to be here, so, yeah.
And also, who we do not have with us, but join us, is our board-certified behavior analyst, Hannah Versard, she's working the majority in the middle school, she was also unable to be here because of the academic commitment, but she wanted to convey her thanks for the position, because that's a new position for us in the middle school, and much appreciated. This is Janet Smith, she's our new assistant principal at the middle school, Janet is a lifelong educator, health, PE, wellness, as well as a orchestrator, I'll let Janet put her right in the spot.
Hello, fellow school committee members, I'm a member of Mash West School Committee, had the privilege of working with Dr. Kazimant in three different capacities now, first as business manager, then as my professor at Pittsburgh State University, I'm going for my CAGS in leadership and management, and now as my superintendent, so I'm thrilled to be here.
She still came back, which is, it's like the first time ever, so this has been great.
And I had the privilege of working with Mrs. Lefrenier several times during my career, so we make a really good team, and I'm very thrilled to be in Narragansett, it's a great place, so, thank you.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Good luck, it's my school.
Thank you. The best years.
Ms. Altisick, who had a few hires, none of them could make it, and it's her fifteenth anniversary, wedding anniversary, so I gave her the pass, so, Ms. Gilson, we'll run it all up.
So, this is Molly Hurley, and she's gonna introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Molly Hurley, and I'm the fourth-grade teacher at Phillipston, this is my first year having my own classroom, last year I was working in Ashburnham at Brink Elementary, and I was a long-term sub in third grade, as well as... I was a long-term sub in third grade as well as kindergarten. And I've already had such a positive experience working in Phillipston thus far. So I'm really excited for this upcoming school year and thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. What was great about hiring her is when we were checking references, I had called Nat because that was where she was working and he's like, oh, I thought I was going to be able to hold her. And then after we hired her, two of our staff members actually, children were in the class she was subbing in and they had incredibly raving news they didn't know. So it was really nice to get that feedback to start with. She's a great, 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 she's transitioning great into Phillipston and is a valued member of the team.
Great, welcome.
And that, and that does it. I mean, so that was quite a, quite a good hire. Very busy summer, a lot of great hires and so far the feedback has been fantastic.
Well, welcome everyone and thank you for coming into our district. It's been, as Dr. Kaz's fan, a very exciting summer for all of us. And we're happy to see fresh faces that have a lot of excitement. Personally, I think you could ask any of us, we think this is a fabulous district to be in. So we welcome you with open arms, as we do our kids. They will benefit, I'm sure, from each and every one of you, so thank you. If any of you need to go and do things, please feel free to, you don't have to sit here. Please feel free to go ahead and leave. You don't need to sit through our meeting and it's okay.
We don't blame you.
We may sneak out with you, but.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great year.
It's all on camera, don't worry.
Lisa's leaving too, she's just excited.
Alrighty. Okay, next up we have our student representative. And one of the things we are going to do this year is have our student rep sit at our table. State law has that, can have our student representative at our table. They can participate in discussions. When it comes to voting, that's held just for the committee, but we do value input. I was sharing with Dr. Kazivan, one of the recent conversations on the MASC, the Mass Association of School Committees listserv, so it's just a communication for all school committee members, was about this position and the value of having student opinion and feedback at the table. So I know I'm very excited to have James here and hope that he will participate. And, but he will also be doing a monthly report, so if you want to let us know what's going on.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So if you can believe it or not, the first 12 days of the 2019-2020 school year has already passed by without one snow day, Dr. Kazivan. But we're working on it. So over the summer, not only did the administration and all faculty have a busy summer, all the students did too. A hundred percent student-led freshman academy went on without a hitch and band camp occurred. And that went off without a hitch. We saw them pretty much every day while we were playing freshman camp, so it was awesome. We've all been welcoming our new staff and hope that they feel right at home at Narragansett. Our women technology program started today. The marching band is performing at the Big E on Tuesday, September 24. And the sports, we have all of our fall sports absolutely in full swing. The football team had their first home game with a win against Southbridge last Friday night. A lot of really good turnout and they played fantastic game. The field hockey team has been absolutely dominating the field with everything, per usual. We have a fantastic program with all of our, our sports. The girls' soccer team had a win earlier in the week, nine to zero, so that was amazing. The, the boys' soccer team has also been having a fantastic season. And the cross-country team has had various meets with many of our Gansett Warriors placing, so that's awesome. The marching band held a fundraiser at the school and had a fantastic performance starting halftime, I tried to start halftime show. I've been lucky enough to enter into the new elementary school with the kindergarteners and everyone is adjusting fantastically. All the teachers are, they're, they're just really excited to be in the new building. The kids are really excited to have all the new playgrounds, all new, everything that's at the school, they're really excited about it. Warrior Fest is coming up on October 26 with sport games happening that day. We have both boys and girls soccer and football game, if I'm correct. And the homecoming dance will be the 25th at the PACC. And overall, there's been a fantastic spirit for the first few weeks of school. And just food for thought, Dr. Kazivan, it's getting colder. My heat doesn't work really well in my car. Anytime you want to call it two hours away, everyone would gladly appreciate it. Not that we don't love being at school, but.
James, I'm never going to call. Thank you, James. I'll keep that in mind, I will, thank you.
One thing that I would like to ask if we could is maybe if we can get some updates on the elementary schools and the middle schools to put in there too. And we can bring those, those informative pieces to the public. I know that we'll be getting into a lot of activities soon, so that'd be great if we could do that. Anyone have any questions for James? Public input. Do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak tonight? Okay, seeing none. Mrs. Parker, NDEA.
I think we've heard it all tonight. I think with all the new, the new hires, I've heard lots of wonderful things. I'm entering both of them and I'm working with all the new teachers in math and just thought it was a great start. And we're building as beautiful as James said. We're all definitely getting our steps in everything today on our, on our efforts. But having, just again, we're, every building, things started operating and really good relationship building. And it just seems like the spirit is really high, basically middle school, elementary school. So it's just a great, great start.
Thank you. All right, ongoing business. Business managers' report. Mrs. Geister had put some reports out for us to be able to review. I'll first go to Mrs. Geister if there's anything that you think we should know about. And then if anyone has any questions, I'll throw it over to you.
First, we're, on the general fund side, we're staying within our monthly allotment for the 112th. What we don't spend in the month, it carries over to the next. So it's, what we didn't do in July and August is certainly going to get us through September and October. All the entitlement grants have been applied for and the money is starting to trickle in this month for them. And on revolving accounts, I just want to bring to your attention, we have a Baldwin Elementary donation account and a Templeton one. And I would just recommend that we combine the two of them to the Templeton one.
Okay, with that, would you be ready to make that happen if we made a motion?
Yep.
Okay, so with Mrs. Geister's recommendation, I would entertain a motion to combine, it was the number, what was it? 304 TC donations and 323 BES donation accounts.
So moved.
I do have a motion. Do I have a second on that? And I have a second. Just for the record, the balance, I'm just looking, the August 31st balance was about 5,900 in the TC donation and 5,500 in, give or take a few bucks in the BES donation. So we'll combine those two together. So we have a first and a second question?
I do have a question. What, what are these donations? What, what are they from?
Most of the money in both of these accounts, the health teacher at the elementary, she does a big walkathon every year. And we make her run it through this revolving account. So all of the money that the kids raise goes towards the different items that get spent from here.
For the schools, for the kids?
Yes.
So the walkathon isn't done through the PTOs anymore?
No, not that one.
Any other questions? So we had a motion in a second to combine.
I do have one more question.
Oh, no, that's fine.
So once they are combined, what is going to happen with that money?
As they need items.
So it's just going to, it's just going to stay for?
Yeah, yeah, until like they need items or.
Okay.
All right, so I.
Is that good? Yeah.
So I have a motion in a second to combine our fund 304 TC donations and 323 BES donations together. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So that carries unanimously. So thank you, Mrs. Geister, for bringing that to our attention. And we'll allow you to do whatever you need to make that happen.
Thanks.
Was there any other items on these reports that we should be aware of? I know being in 112th is.
No, I mean, most of our spending in the general fund has been your basics, up your insurances and those types of items and the little bit of payroll. September really starts when all the supplies are, the bills are coming in, when you're going to see a lot more activity in next month's report.
Would it be possible to get a cash flow for next month? Just to kind of see where we are, how much we were allotted, what we spent, so we keep our finger on that pulse of make sure that we're not going to end up in any trouble at any point. I know that we allow borrowing in anticipation, but we certainly are under a different level of scrutiny with the 112th situation. So that would be great, thank you. I just wanted to bring out, I, I was looking at the revolving accounts. I know they released some preliminary circuit breaker numbers. I don't know if everyone had a chance to see those today. I, I didn't know if you had an opportunity to look at it and say.
I did.
Was it what we expected?
No, it's $100,000 less.
Oh, awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because I, I just pulled a 262, 260,000 and we were anticipating.
I was anticipating 375.
So maybe next month you could let us know what you think the true impact's going to be if we've.
Yep.
If we planned on spending that, which obviously we do. Maybe you could report back on that and let us, educate us as to what that means.
Yep.
Because I know for me, that is not something I'm fully versed in, so I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Mrs. Geister? All right, so I think we're good with the business managers' report, thank you.
I would just, I'd like to say thank you for all of the A through H's, J's, whatever they were. And they were done without comment at a spare of the moment. And I thank you for all of that. I know it hasn't quite ended, but your patience and information is well appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm sure she wasn't thinking any comments either.
Yeah. The next item that I believe would be for Mrs. Geister as well, is just talking about FY19 financials, including an E and D update. I know we're just finishing up with the end of year report.
End of year report, yep. It's due the end of the month, the end of the year, but I'm hoping by the end of, honestly Monday, I'm hoping that it has your signature and it leaves my desk. And then I can focus on E and D. But I know that the treasurer has, she's balanced, she's, she's ready to go as soon as I'm ready to go, so.
When does the E and D number have to be? That's later on, right? Is like November 1 or December 1?
They have a deadline of October 31st, but nobody does that date.
Not if you ask, Mrs. Handy, she's. I admit that that would be the date. But, okay, good. That's awesome. I was going to ask something really relevant and important and, yeah, that's where that went. So good, thank you. Oh, I wanted to ask, the end of year report, is that all submitted electronically now?
Yes. Yep, it, it goes right through the Desi's website on the secure portal.
Perfect. That must make things easier in a lot of ways.
Well, it does when you don't have computer glitches, which it was going to be done tonight. But a little Excel issue wiped out everything that was entered. So tomorrow morning is starting entering from scratch again.
Well, and that speaks to the patience that Mrs. Geister was just mentioning and keeping the commentary to yourself. So thank you, thank you for that. All right. With that being said, I will jump into school committee comments. Anyone on the school committee have any comments to make?
Not a comment, just a note that I will be attending the MASC this weekend. I'm looking forward to that, so.
Charting the course.
Yes, yes, yes.
Question, when we proved the minutes, we said the lease was going to be on the agenda. And, and I'll bring it up only if it's not.
It is not because there's nothing to, it will be under Dr. Kazivan's superintendent report as to what the status of that is. So it's not a specific item.
Okay, as long as there will be an update on that. Because either we have a lease or we don't have a lease, either way it has to be set.
And, and there is an update from the board of selectmen side in Templeton because they did discuss it, so that'll all come together. Thank you. Comments, anyone else? I just want to put out there one more time, that next Wednesday, the 25th, 7 o'clock is the district-wide town meeting. It is super important for everybody to attend. We had a less than impressive turnout at the one held in August. I know a lot of families are on vacation, but it is super important that people show up and vote. No matter what you vote for, just show up and vote and let your voice be heard. If anyone has any questions prior to the meeting, there's information out on the website. It's a, I don't want to say the presentation may be dated earlier, but a lot of the information is still relevant for the school budget. As well as I know Dr. Kazivan will take phone calls and see people and answer questions. So please contact central office, reach out to any of the school committee members as well if you have questions prior to the meeting. And, you know, as I said, just show up. Show up and bring two friends and maybe three friends.
And just going off on that, if anybody watched the selectmen's meeting, I think it was September 11th, they did vote to opt for a lower number. The Templeton selectmen are going to offer a lower number during our meeting.
So they've been planning on amending back to.
Correct.
Was it the same number that the 195?
Can I just for clarification purposes? We've yet to have an opportunity to discuss our actual budget?
Correct.
In a joint town meeting or any town meeting, so how do we get back to that?
So that'll be, yeah, so that'll be, at this meeting, Dr. Kazivan should take some time. We'll have an opportunity at the beginning to discuss. We didn't go into a lot of detail at the last meeting. But I think at this meeting, we really need to go into what makes up the budget. I know there's a lot of data that's out there, so wrap that all together. As well as if any school committee members do want to also make comments, that would be a good time to do so. I think one of the important things procedurally that people need to understand, because I was asked this question on Facebook and I commented because procedurally, it's, it's not straightforward, the amendment process at a town meeting. We will offer our motion and it will be, it should be seconded, I would hope. At that point, an amendment can be made and that would be seconded. There would be all sorts of discussion about the merits of that amendment. The first vote taken is to allow that amendment to move forward as the main motion to get voted on. You're essentially voting on something, it feels like twice. But at that point, if there's a vote taken to see if that motion would be accepted by the floor, if it's not accepted, then we go back to our original number. So I think people need to understand the ramifications of voting either way. If it is voted up, then that becomes the number and we would vote on the 195. If it's voted down, then it goes back to the 1987 and that's the motion. There can be additional amendments, you can't keep amending back to the same number. There's, there's a whole bunch of different rules. But I think procedurally, people just aren't clear as to how town meeting works. And it gets very, you know, confusing for people. So I did, I pointed out procedurally what would happen at one of the Facebook groups. And I know many people had said that was very helpful. So I just, one of the things I think that I would like to request, and I know we've, we've got our moderator, is maybe to be able to lay out maybe a little better for the people, what each vote truly means and what are the ramifications of an up or a down, so people can, can understand what they're voting for. It gets a little confusing, especially when we have an hour of discussion. You kind of forget what it is that we're doing. So we can probably have that discussion with him and then just, maybe just get a few more procedural pieces put out there. I think would be helpful, so.
Do we have active PTOs?
We do, and actually they'll be on our agendas for the next, next month and the month after, yep.
That's something I'd like to have the principals come in and introduce their, whatever their, their chair of the PTO is. Because that's how a lot of the community, school community, gets information on what you just talked about. But if we don't have active PTOs, and that really does come from the school leadership to, to get that going. And we have had that in the past. And if it isn't there, there has to be another vehicle for people to ask questions in a smaller. to be another vehicle for people to ask questions in a smaller confined, because what you just said is confusing in itself.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
So, I'd like to have that.
Yeah, they are actually already on, I think we talked about maybe Phillipston in October, and Templeton in November. I think that was what we talked about, if it worked out from a scheduling. So, that's already planned on being on an agenda, based on your comment. It's too bad we didn't have this earlier, but we will get there. So, that will be addressed as far as getting them in here, using them to help spread the word is another.
Mountain chair. Is it possible to have a handout that just describes that process?
I think there was, in the moderator's operating procedures, I guess, I'll call them, I forget what Mr. Flynn had used to call it, there was information in there. But it's just, there's so much information, and so many different motions, and what does it mean, and how does it work, that really keeping it relevant to what the action on the floor is, I think will help people. You know, we're getting used to these meetings, I guess, but there's still a lot of new people. Hopefully, we get a lot more people to show up, so that we can-
I think the best question out there at that last meeting was that lady who stood there and said, "How do we get both?", and nobody could really answer that, or nobody did answer that.
How do we?
How do we get, how do we fund both appropriately? And nobody really answered that.
We just clapped.
And you're right. No, and that is, you know, that funding both, funding the school is our purview. Funding the town is the board of selectmen's purview.
Right, but how many of us wanted to sit there and yell, "Overall"?
Well, and I said that at our last meeting, that it is a shame that the town of Templeton, and again, there could have been further discussions now, I know there will be another meeting, I just think that needs to be considered. Citizens can do citizens petitions to ask these things, but it's unfortunate when you have to, you know, make this an either or. What if people would be willing, maybe they can have both? It's just, it's unfortunate thing, so.
If you don't come this same as the meeting in August, how many times can the school board bring this forward in the timeframe of December?
Okay, so, well, it's actually December 1 is the date. What we looked at from a timing is, we tried to push this one out as far as possible. Didn't matter, because the regulations state, if the school committee, if a different number than what we've certified is approved on floor, we come back and make a decision. So, if we agree, we're done. If we don't agree, which is where you're going, then we must schedule another district-wide town meeting within 45 days. Unfortunately, from September 25th, or even if we had gone out as late as we could, to December 1, it's 50 some odd days, and we would have had to have, we have to have one more meeting. So, we're kind of stuck at this point, that if we can't come to a conclusion at this meeting, we will be having another district-wide town meeting.
I just think it's important that that information-
Thank you. No, it is, it is very good to let people know that, you know, at the end, the school committee must agree for a lot of very good reasons, because you could have some crazy happenings where they want to only fund the school $10, you know? So, that's the recourse to make sure we protect the students. So, I think that is a very important point, that we are on, we can't settle now. We will be having another district-wide town meeting, and then at that point, if we don't come up to a conclusion, December 1st, the commissioner, Commissioner Riley will, actually, Dr. Kazivan will first make his phone calls, and then Commissioner Riley will issue whatever edict that he needs to make. It's not full receivership, there's an oversight component, and we'll learn more about it at that point, so.
That's a good question. I'm sorry, what is the lead time, or what is the timeline like from December 1st until when? We have some kind of idea as to where we go with that.
So, we actually are kicking off our budget meetings for FY '21. We kick it off with a school committee meeting, which will be done prior to our next meeting that we have in October, but then we do the real kickoff with the two boards of selectmen. We have a meeting October 27th, 28th, whatever the Monday is. So, we'll meet with both boards of selectmen to start and engage in the process. Not having a set budget at that point will make the discussion a little more interesting, because there's variability in numbers, but it'll set the stage for, hey, how do we look? How do all the, how do the towns look? What does the school look like? And where are we trying to come together?
I don't think that was her question.
It's not really exactly what I'm asking. Many of the people who don't support an override, don't support increasing the budget or matching certified budget, has said, "Just let the state come in." So, the state's coming in in December if we can't come to a resolution. When the state comes in, do they have a period of time, they can take like six months, six years?
The way that the statute is written is, the state will come in until June 30th, or until a budget for the following fiscal year is set. So, if we get our acts together, and next May, we go to town meetings and everybody approves a budget, he'll be in through June 30th to finish fiscal year '20, and July 1, we go back to things as normal. If we don't get our act together, and for FY '21, do not get a budget approved, and it goes through this process, he stays. Now, again, I don't want to speak exactly to what having the state in, it says, as I said, it's not full receivership, like some other districts have dealt with, but there is some oversight, and there's, you have to filter payment, and some other things have to go through for approvals, and again, I don't know if you've-
I don't really know the details. We're just hearing that they will be oversight, so.
Do they sit with you guys?
My guess is no. It's not a receivership. This is financially, the business manager and the treasurer, my guess, with the superintendent there with them, are going to be having a lot of discussions at, with the Department of Ed, and with the financial people there, who Commissioner Riley assigns to oversee what we're doing, to make sure, I would assume we don't overspend, that we're spending on the right, out of the right accounts for things, because that's the other thing, they don't want you saying, "Oh, well, we'll just pay for these things over here." You can't do that, you have to follow what your budget was. So, that is my understanding of oversight. I don't know what district has been in oversight recently, if ever.
Well, there's, there are three levels of intervention, and this is, of course, the lowest. We're not, we're the least intrusive. This is not that we are fiscally unable or deficit in any way, right? So, there's this level of oversight that, that I think it's only in two places, or maybe only one in the state, I forget, but where they are making every single financial decision period, okay? So, there's that end of the spectrum.
That's where the school committee gets disintermediated, you put someone in-
Right. The state takes over, completely, entirely. This is oversight, in the sense that, from what we understand, is they will come in, and they will ensure that we are, that we are spending our money appropriately or wisely. Of course, our end-of-year report shows that, and we are audited every year, so I don't know how much of that will happen. This is what I've been guaranteed. Some people have said that literally, there'll be 10 or 15 people from DESI in here, that's a, this is a true, that is absolutely not true. They don't have 10 or 15 folks to move out here to Templeton slash Phillipston to do what, you know, exactly. It'll be mostly a paperwork, probably a technology type of situation, where they're watching how we are spending money, I guess. They have told us directly that they will make no programmatic changes or decisions. People have said that when the state comes in, they will close X and X, or they will go ahead and they will, you know, cut this or cut that. No, they won't. They will not make any programmatic changes at this level of oversight. So, if you're asked, "Well, what are you saying?", we don't know, quite frankly. Christine Lynch, whom we spoke to directly, you know, over the phone, they're very, I don't want to use the word cagey, but certainly, they will do what they need to do. That's why a lot of these things are, you know, why did we get the number that we have for 112? We're asked, why is it the FY '20 number, not the number of FY '19 number? Because the Department of Ed wanted it that way, literally. It's well-written to the point where they will make whatever decision they need to make to do whatever they need to do. So, we don't know. I know it'll be quick. I know that they'll come in December, they have to, they have to set the budget so that folks can get their tax bills in time on that number, if it's a new number or otherwise, but what happens after that is really, I guess.
Just one more question. Thank you for clarification, both of you, it's very helpful. Are there fines associated with not meeting that budget, or having the state come in?
No, there's no monetary fines, so that would not be, yeah.
But they could stay involved for the next budget cycle, which, which they could. They could say, "Okay, we're still not where we need to be in terms of, you know, gaining some type of understanding." And from what I understand, they can then have a say in the next, but they can do what they need to do. So, it's, it's not written anywhere. You're not going to find that when you read the statute. It just simply says that they will involve themselves as much as they need to, but they could. So, I don't, we don't know what that, we truly do not know what that means, because it's, we just don't have a lot of experience with that, not just us, but other districts have not had to go through this. There's not a lot of districts out there that have gone, have gone this far. And every step we take, there are even fewer districts that have gone that far, okay?
And there's a reason for that. The state wants cities and school districts, towns and school districts, to solve their own problem. It's very similar to running your own house. You solve your problems in your house. They don't want people to come, the state doesn't know what the town of Templeton and our school committee is best together for our children, so they don't really have an answer as to what they'll do, because they, and really, in all, what they would like is for it to be done, and them not to come, because that's the best thing to do for us. So, there isn't a roadblock.
Any other school committee comments, or at this point? Okay, well, we'll move on to the agenda. We had new business. We were hoping to have a new nurse, which we don't have yet, so we'll pass over that. The school committee, just for point of order, needs to appoint the nurse. The hiring's done, but we officially appoint them, it's just part of the way the law's written. The second piece of new business is my new business that I wanted to bring to the committee, the school committee self-evaluation. Last year, this was a link I sent out, it was a Google survey. I will send out the same survey. We didn't really do a lot of deep dive into any of the results. I know we did go over them, but this year, I'd really like to get everybody to respond, and then we can maybe decide if we need to do some sort of workshop or offsite or something to look at the results, and do some goal-setting or something with the data. It focuses on how we think the committee operates together, that's the real focus. And it'll be done, as I said, with Google, certain Google docs, so that Mrs. Charter doesn't have to add things up at all for us. So, I will send out an email with the information, but I just wanted to let you know that that is upcoming. Next up was other items not recently anticipated by the chair, 48 hours before the meeting. We did have one thing, well, it's actually two, because it's two items, and we're going to now make this a standard item for at least the rest of this fiscal year, because surplus is key to us making some motions to get rid of items as we begin to go through Baldenville, and finally, find other things that we need to find, homes other than the Naragets Regional School District for. So, there were two requests. The first was from Mr. Pedrazek in Food Services. There are two items being declared surplus from the cafeteria. They were two Healthy Choice vending machines, half refrigerated, half dry, eight years old, good working condition. So, I would entertain a motion for someone to approve these items for surplus. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any comments or questions on those items? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? So, that carried unanimously. And the second list was from Phillipston Memorial School. There is a whole, if everybody had, they were posted out there for everybody to review. I'm not going to read every item on there, so it would be all the items on the list for Phillipston Memorial School that they have determined need to be surplus. I would entertain a motion to surplus the items on the list for PMS. So, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And I have a second. Any discussion, comments?
Where are those posted to the public? Once they are surplus, how does the public see them?
Mrs. Geister?
Well, it goes to the towns first, and then it can go to the public after that.
And the town's responsible for making it to the public?
Well, we will do that, but we give them a couple of weeks in order to make arrangements to come see the stuff if they want to.
So, if whatever they don't take, then we follow, whatever the next steps would be to either try and sell it, or throw it out, or?
Honestly, most of this list in Phillipston, because they took the better stuff from Baldenville, then they got rid of this, most of this stuff on here is dumpster material.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? Okay, and that carries unanimously. Mr. Mason isn't here tonight, but he did pose a question to me offline about Baldenville, and I don't know if he had a chance to speak to anyone else about it. We had had an afternoon, I think it was a Thursday, last Thursday, was it, where people, the public could go in. What he commented was, is he had heard, some people said, "Well, I couldn't do a weekday." He said, "I don't know what's left, I don't know if there would be a need, but would it be possible for us to maybe do a Saturday open for people to come and take anything?" So, I wanted to put that there, out there on behalf of Mr. Mason.
Most of everything went on Thursday. It was a bit chaotic. Really, the only things that are left are student desks and chairs, and there's literally like probably a couple of odd-shaped, like the kidney-shaped tables, a couple of round ones. That's all that's in there. Mr. Moulton has contacted the company that we had heard about that will take the leftover student furniture and donate it to charities. The only catch that we found to that yesterday was that there's a cost to us to have them come in. It's basically hiring a moving company to come in and move all this stuff unless you can provide the labor. We don't have the labor, because it has to be done in a two-hour window. So, I don't know if you got final numbers, but it was $3,600 just for the containers to put the stuff in, never mind the moving company. So, I'm not quite sure that that's really an option anymore.
Yeah, she didn't do that to me today, except that she had not gotten the number back from the moving company that they used. I would anticipate a number probably in the next 48 hours, like we have a minute, at least $3,600 just for the containers, so.
Do we want to entertain maybe, would it be possible? Is it worth it, I guess? And I can leave that with you guys to decide, or do we put a message out and say, "If anyone might be interested, contact us, we'll make an appointment to go..." And, you know, it'd be nice if we could get more people to take what's left, and that would minimize the amount of things we need to worry about. But I don't want to put, you know, anyone out that they've got to go man the building for eight hours on a Saturday.
We have one principal of a school in Pittsburgh that has interest in some of the desks and chairs, but she hasn't been able to get the labor to come look at them and take them. I mean, if the public wants student desks and chairs, I'll go down there on a Saturday, but I can't do it till the end of the month.
Okay, so, if anyone then in the public would be interested, could we have them contact central office, and then you would know that?
Well, I think maybe we'll just pick-
Pick a day?
Yep.
I just checked my emails, and I got an email back from her at 5:00 p.m. I reckon I have a labor estimate for you. Based on our experience, we'd expect the labor for this type of project to cost $2,250. A total project cost, including labor and our services, will be roughly $4,500. It's just, I just got to 5:00, I just figured I'd check what was sitting here, so.
So, how about we do this?
We could do another yard sale day like that last weekend if, if they want to come in, and then, I guess, anything after that. I know that someone at the highway, they were, the highway department was interested in taking apart everything that's left, in taking the scrap metal. So, I would say after that day, we turn over the school to the town for maybe August, October 1st, and then whatever is left in there, the town can have for scrap metal.
So, in order to turn the building over to the town, we need, the school needs to vote on that. So, our next meeting, official meeting, isn't, I hate to even say, is October, what is it, 15th? So, from a timing perspective, um...
It is the 16th.
That's probably when that would happen. So, I'll, I'll let you figure out when you want to do that, and hopefully we can get more people to take things so that we don't have to dispose of them. And I'm glad you brought up turning over the building because that is something that needs to get on an agenda for the school committee to officially do. Just going to make a note of that. Does anyone see any issues with waiting till our meeting, the 16th? I'm sure none of us here really probably have one, but...
As long as we do it before heat season.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Next up. Okay, the superintendent report. There's, we have several things, so I will throw them all out there for Dr. Kazban. We have staffing updates, enrollments, opening school. We can talk about police, whatever you've got. It's all yours.
So, you know, well, I want to definitely talk about the opening, opening week, opening day. It honestly went about as smooth as it could possibly go. Yes, you know, I will readily admit that all eyes were pointed towards Templeton Elementary School. It was a student and parent drop-off that we had planned but had never seen in person, obviously, and quite frankly, was about as smooth as an opening could possibly go. I want to thank the folks who live on Wellington South Road, who've given us really good feedback about what, you know, what's going on. Almost at the moment, it's actually happening, thanks to Facebook and other neat things. But they, even many of them commented that it was, it was, it was far better than they expected the first couple of days. We are working out some, some kinks. We are letting the folks know that they cannot park in front of driveways. We've, we have sent multiple, you know, notes, letters, reminders, that kind of thing. And so, the police will now just take action. Because quite frankly, the school has done quite a bit in terms of letting folks know what is appropriate. If folks just don't want to listen to that the nice way, then Templeton PD will, will take issue with it. And they should, because they've been warned, and you shouldn't be parking in front of people's driveway, especially when they need to leave for school. So, yes, but we're also working on a few of those things, but honestly, all, all schools are a wonderful opening. So, the staffing update, we've talked about. Enrollment, enrollment is starting to settle. We don't put it, when I say, and folks know this by now, we don't put it in the book until October. We, Chelsea Mason, who is our registrar, every day updates this, these, the information that you have before you, as if you remember, the first week or so. We could see swings of 10 or 15 kids one way or another. We don't really pay much mind to it because we don't know really who's here or not here until, you know, about, well, now. Over the next two weeks, we shouldn't see, well, there will be no, you know, misses. Let's put it that way. If someone moves in or someone moves out, then certainly that happens. October 1 is the, is the magic day in which we kind of freeze in time our numbers, exactly what we have as far as Phillipsden or Templeton or School Choice. We freeze that, and the state uses those numbers as well as, as well as us in doing quite a bit of work. So, October 1 is when we start putting it in the book, so to speak. School Choice, we've, again, we've leveled out around 200, as of right now, 255 students overall, which you have that, of course, in your packet. And residents, in terms of total number of residents, district residents, is up to 1,471. Again, we won't really start talking about that number until October, but that is a number that is certainly higher than it has been at this point in the past few years. To the point, if you will, just, you know, let me talk about new, new students. We count kindergarten as new students, okay? We don't necessarily count them as move-ins because they very well could have, families could have lived here and forever for that, for all practical purposes. But we, we do count them when we look at how many, and we do call it the new student move-in report that we have. So, over the summer or up to today, from July 1, we've had 167 new students slash move-ins. Of that, a grand total of 101 of those, make sure I got that right, yep, 101 of those are kindergarten students. That's, this is district-wide. Okay? That's a pretty high number. That's higher than we've, we've had in a bit. But more, more to the point, 55 students from Templeton, grades 1 through 12, are literal move-ins, new. And nine from Phillipsden are literal move-ins, grades 1 through 12. We have four, that doesn't, if you were to do the quick math, you're going to find that it's what, three or four short of the 167 total. That's because there are three or four families that are identif, they, they don't need to give their addresses because of the AC, not the ACT Act, but the...
ACP.
ACP Act, which keeps their address hidden due to domestic violence, et cetera. So, give, give or take three on either side of that, on that number. We've seen quite a literal move-ins. So, we're, we're full. You'll see there, anywhere from any group, these are grades that are higher. These numbers are much higher than they have been, but we don't really start talking about them in finality until about October, October 1st. So, that is, that has been something that we have been watching very carefully. I'm going to pause because I know that folks often have questions about student enrollment or just, just the number of students in general.
I just wanted to make a comment because this also ties into our budget discussion because we seem to forget to remind everybody that this committee voted to hire five elementary teachers out of our school choice, right? Five of them in Templeton Center, which has allowed us to keep, if I'm looking at this correctly, our class sizes, 23, 24, 25, 24, 25. I think it's really important to understand that that was almost $300,000 of expense that we have put into school choice. If we did not hire those teachers, our numbers in Templeton would look between 31, 30, 32, 33, 32, 34, somewhere in those numbers. So, I want to be very clear of the action that we took and the results of that action because it also ties in, and I'm going to just segue on topic, off topic, to our budget number, that when the town of Templeton looks to ask us to cut our budget, okay, we already have $300,000 we got to worry about first in school choice because cutting our budget will mean that the number of teachers, because monies are teachers, is going down, which could impact potentially school choice, and that's money we're spending an additional $300,000 on for those teachers. So, I think it's very critical that everybody understands that this is a waterfall effect, and that cutting our budget may sound like it's only an impact of a couple hundred thousand dollars, but it could be much, much more than that. So, I just want to put that out there, yeah.
Yeah, and so, to the point, so certainly, the retort is that, well, if you didn't have so many school choice kids, you wouldn't need so many teachers. I think, and I've, I have written about this, people have asked me, and, you know, so what I say is, sorta. At the elementary level, you have a grand total of 63 school choice kids spread out over grades 1 through 5. I can tell you that if you took the five school choice children in the fifth grade, there's a grand total of five out of 101, you're still going to need the four teachers that you have in the fifth grade, okay, as an example. If you take the 10 out of the fourth grade, you're still going to need, because you're talking about numbers of 24, 25, and almost 26 in some of these classrooms. So, when I said sorta, then I will openly admit that if you looked at the middle school, grades 6, 7, and 8, we have close to, my glasses on, Chris, close to somewhere between 20, you know, between 20 and 24 percent, depending on what grade, in terms of school choice. Remember, at the middle school, everybody comes together at that point. So, whatever you had at Baldenville, well, well, the old, the old way, because no one's come up from Templeton Elementary School yet, folks, just remember that. So, we had very few kids coming up from either, either grade, quite either school. But now that we're, you know, we're trying to also put as many kids down in Phillipsden, those numbers are going to start increasing. So, yeah, that's a number that if you took away, for example, if 29 school choice children in the seventh grade, which would make it close to about a, about 100, a little under 100 kids grand total, well, you still only have five teachers still. Some of these don't, it just doesn't work. The eighth grade, sure. If you took 23 students away from the 117, okay, absolutely. You could argue that the four teachers that you could maybe drop down to an acceptable level. Here's the problem. That, starting grade 7 back to grade 4, I think, grade 3, I'll call it grade 3, you have 99, 95, and then you start going into total grades of 100, okay, which we haven't had in a while, from what I understand, but when I can look back. You have 136 kids in the sixth grade. You have 100 and, you have 136 in the sixth grade, 120 in the seventh grade, and 117 in the eighth grade. Eighth grade represents really the last of the, of the smallish type of classroom, uh, groups at that point. And so, you're starting to see, again, resident totals over 90 in every class. Most of them are over 94, 95, which also has not been that consistent over the last couple of years.
Can I, can I add one more point to where you're going?
Sure.
Is that we also fail to make it a point to say, we have five teaching positions in school choice. So, if you want to make a case that, you know, 20 kids in a classroom, well, we have how many school choice out and how many in? So, we're a net of 120, 125. We have five teaching positions. If 25 kids fit a classroom, we've allocated five teachers to be paid at a school choice. So, we've already washed that. So, we go a very slippery slope, but I know, Mr. Trifilo, you were very vocal about that when we took the vote, because it is a slippery slope and what the implications are. Most of the monies as well from school choice are incremental. The cost of bringing in a new pupil is, we already have the lights on, we already have a principal, we already have administration, we already have all these things. It's not a large incremental expense to bring a student in, so it helps us. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that out. Yes, Mr. Trifilo?
Well, there's been, I think what you, what Dr. Kazban just mentioned for numbers is going to be hard for the community to hold on to because of the numbers in 11 and 12. So, right up front, those numbers are not what we just talked about. Those, if, those numbers are coming. So, there are smaller numbers in 11 and 12, just to be said. And I think the second thing that was talked about needs to be said, at least it was in Templeton Selectmen's Meeting and Advisory, is that we made a class. It's a business decision to make a class out of school choice when we made the kindergarten. That may be so, however, that was so that the parents who then filled this audience, and I wish for those days again because then that would make our, our budget easier. But those parents wanted the building to remain open. And in order to do that, that class had to be made out of school choice to bring that money in and to keep that building open. And I think people forget that. And I want to remind them that that's why it's there.
Thank you.
So, so again, we won't, we won't talk really about our numbers until October 1st, but they are trending to be higher than we've had on other October 1sts. But I'll be able to report out on that, well, certainly by the next meeting.
So, I don't know for any of you out there that want to see projections on demographics town by town, the Donahue Report, which is a UMass report that's done, it seems like the trends that they have projected seem to be coming true for both Phillipsden and Templeton. We are seeing an uptick in Templeton resident enrollment, slight, but it's there, and that's what the Donahue Report predicted, is an aging population, but there is an uptick. Phillipsden's metrics were aging population, unfortunately, no real growth, potentially some very small decline in residents, which I think our numbers play out to some validity. So, as we go forth and plan, you know, those are things that we'll need to take into consideration, obviously. Thank you.
So, given what we've just said, and there's been quite a bit of discussion about busing and transportation, especially about money about transportation, and, and of course, the reimbursement and cherry sheets and projections, et cetera. I'm going to let in Marie, Ms. Geister, excuse me, really describe a situation that we currently have, well, we've had it since the beginning of school, in terms of our busing. And so, to give you an idea of, you know, where, where this money is actually going and how it's, how, how we're probably still going to have to scramble, but I'm going to let Marie talk about that.
Okay, so, honestly, busing is going great. It is probably going the smoothest that I've seen because Chelsea and I have worked really hard finding where the kids are and planning the routes and stuff. On the other hand, we have a family that lives in Phillipsden, but you have to go out across the street from Market Basket and Affol to get them. They've been there a couple of years. We had a new family move on to that same road, so now there's more kids out there. The family has been very gracious over the few years that they've been in town, that they drive their students two and a half miles out to the Market Basket to the light, and our bus has been able to pick them up there. The bus company will not go out that road because it's dangerous. If anyone's familiar with that road, it's quite narrow and there's a huge rock that you sort of have to go in the woods to get around. The family can't transport them anymore because she has to take a job. So, we have those students on a minivan, and it's costing us $36,000 to transport them there. Makes two runs, one to the middle school and one to Phillipsden Memorial, and it will do that for the rest of the year. Also, we have all those students that he told you that moved into Templeton, they all live in Baldenville. And there isn't enough buses in Baldenville to fit them.
We had a problem, was it last year we had to add a second run?
Last year, I added a whole second bus. So, this year, our middle high school is good, the buses are full, but there is not overcrowding like we've had in the past. I have, one of my buses in Baldenville had 78 students get off of it one morning last week. So, we have a couple options. We have one bus that we run at the high school level that does not do an elementary run. No-brainer. Bring it on to put in for the elementary run. Problem solved. No cost to that. The only problem is, that bus, because it doesn't do the elementary run, runs all the athletes down to Gilman Way in the afternoon, and it is also our late bus. The bus company does not have drivers. None of the companies have, because I've talked to four of them this week to see if I could get substitute buses. There's no drivers. So, we're up against you deciding if you want to divvy up the elementary run and wing it for the afternoon because I've found someone to drive Sparky, but they can't commit to every, every day.
Six, Chris?
So...
(laughing)
So, so they, so they can, they will run the students back and forth to Gilman Way to get the athletes down there. And I'm hoping that by alleviating that portion of the pressure off the bus company, they will at least work with me on a day-to-day basis to do my three after-school wait bus runs. And I'm waiting for a price back from another company, but they don't have drivers either. So we're in a bit of a bind, but I honestly think that Monday we need to start the second bus run for the elementary to alleviate those seventy-eight kids.
How many kids actually sit, elementary kids can fit on a bus?
The buses, the capacities you see on the sides is based on three to a seat. Well, fourth and fifth graders cannot sit three to a seat. So on each of my Baldwinville buses, I have two right now that do that part of town. There is, like, we have, like, sixty-five on one bus, sixty-nine on another bus, and then the one that came with the seventy-eight, because there's obviously people on the bus that were possibly doing extended day or moved in and we didn't, haven't captured them yet. There is twenty-two that, this is my computer, like, there's twenty-two, according to the computer, fourth and fifth graders on one bus, and twenty-four on another. Well, two to a seat, that's taking up twelve seats. That's half of my bus is filled with fourth and fifth graders, and then the other four grades are crammed into the other twelve seats. It, it's expected, like kindergarten, first graders, three to a seat, but not everyone's the same size.
And with winter coming with coats and...
Yep.
Thirty-six out of the fifty-five children who are actual move-ins, new, are grades one through five.
What, um, as far as our athletes, because they do practice every day, what's the number of athletes on that activity bus going to Gilman?
Well, it, it varies, because if someone has a game or whatever. But the, what was going to happen on certain days when they all had to practice and the middle school had a game down at Gilman Way, my regular yellow bus that was going to do it was going to have to do a double run for that day, there was that many athletes. So Sparky is going to have to do quite a few. But it's one of our teachers, and he's more than willing to help out. He just has little kids and he doesn't live in town, so there's going to be days when he is not available.
And so we've talked about the late bus, right? So, folks, I, I, and I do appreciate this. Folks say, look, you're a working community, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stresses on everyone. Our extended day program, which literally saves the day for, we have a waitlist, okay? On both, by wa, by the way, both elementary schools. This isn't just about Templeton and, and at Phillips. Um, that, but that extended day bus are for kids who are middle school age or high school age, who are...
No, there's no extended day.
There's no, no extended, no, 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 I meant the late bus.
It's the late bus, it's the after-school help for middle and high school.
Yeah, but it all, it all factors in, because if you're working, if you have two working parents, you've got someone who's, you know, your, your littlest is, is in daycare or extended day, and the oldest middle schooler, say, is getting extra help or doing whatever, and the only way home that they can get home is through the, is through the late bus. These are the type of things that now we're starting to have to think about, you know, pushing to other, uh, to, just the general transportation of things.
What days do we have late buses running?
Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday.
So we do have three days. So, have we thought of an alternate, can we provide? Can we get that bus to make another run for that purpose? It's going to be later, but we'd also need to provide someone here and pay them to watch the kids. Have we tossed that around? Um, because I hate to, you know, that late bus, when these kids need help, that's part of the commitment to, to their education. We, we have teachers who twice a week have to stay for that, and by not giving them, I mean, granted, we're only doing it three days. They really should be doing it four days, but I suspect Fridays is probably a, pretty much a low-ride day.
You could push it off, because after four o'clock, when the elementary finishes their runs, then if, I, I don't know what their union rules are, how many hours they put in, but they probably could have more drivers then, because they're, at least have the elementary to pick from. Um, so you could push it off that the bus doesn't come until four o'clock, but then you've got to have monitors here to stay with those students.
It's not, it's not academically effective either.
By that point, you're not...
Have them hanging around. What about extended day? They run some, they're, they run in excess money. So can they pay some of the bus fee so that we can have enough? The problem with the bus that's crammed with kids, that's where the, the problem starts.
I can't get a bus, I can't get a driver for the bus.
Or you can't get the driver on the bus. You could pay for it, actually, if you could get it. But it has to be manageable, because the behavior starts on the bus. Going home, that's where parents have problems because of bullying, they claim, and all the other. And you've got, you can't cram them in the bus, because academically that's going to affect their day, it really makes a difference.
And the company has buses, they just don't have drivers. So anyone out there that wants to be a bus driver, we need you.
And I would say too, if there's any, anyone who works for the district that would also like to drive Sparky, that wants to get licensed, to contact Central Office and make arrangements, because Dr. Casaband doesn't want to be the only one with the hat on.
Do we have liability for these people to do that?
Yeah, they're covered for me.
It's all covered.
But just to give you an idea, it's four hundred dollars a day for a bus. So four hundred dollars a day times, you know, whatever, how many total days that you would need it. In any case, you're, you know, I just, I just quickly did, you know, a hundred and ten days, if you just, you know, just did the quick math. Well, it's, it's almost fifty grand. You know, fifty, they, they, they do make some money, which they put back into the, I'm talking about extended day now. Well, they, they probably can't carry fifty, fifty thousand dollars from a bus, on a bus fee. I'm just saying, just as an ex, I'm just using that as a wild example.
Yeah, some of it, kind of.
But, but extended day to their point, they have, like, they're doing great, but there was issues there too, because there's no one who wants to sign up to work at six-thirty in the morning for an hour and a half to work the morning shift. So when you go to Market Basket for twelve dollars an hour with nobody talking back to you for the most part,
No reason to outbid.
It's a lot easier to take on that job, so we just had to increase. We're paying fifteen dollars an, an hour to get someone to come in the mornings. So that's going to eat right into anything that we had saved there.
Just as a point, um, I know that the, there's a supplemental budget that's being proposed, of which they're looking, if it passes, we don't know, um, about one point two million dollars in additional regional transportation one-time thing for FY nineteen. Um, I didn't do the math to see what that brings to us. Um, and I wish I had, because that might be a number, I can't imagine, it's a lot of money. Um, but even if it was ten or fifteen thousand dollars, that could help offset some of these costs. Um, so maybe we could, and it has to get approved by September thirtieth. So we still have another two weeks before we know, but it sounds as if we really need to do something now.
One of the things we're looking into, and we've talked about this quite a bit, um, is to purchase vans, right? Which are not buses, and anyone can drive them. Now granted, you're not putting a football team, you're not going to put thirty, you know, thirty kids going out to practice, but you can do back and forth. So believe it or not, we're going to get to the point, whether either through the lack of drivers slash buses, or just by, by per bus, it is going to start making sense financially to, to start looking into, just like as we did with the, um, the Plom, right? We're just going to take, for example, we're going to, we, we offset, we took the money that we're normally paying the town. It helps the town out, it helps us, but, but eventually that turns into, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's savings for us, right? We start making money in a sense on that, because we own the truck, we, you know, the people work for us, and it'll be, it'll be, uh, savings. But those are the things that we're looking at long-term. We have to negotiate another bus contract, it's, it's that time. Um, you know, we're, we're getting ready to do that, um, put the bid out, those type of things, and so we'll let you know. But right now, we had, this is how bad it is. They called us two days, or three days prior.
They didn't call us.
Oh, they didn't call us?
Monday, it was Monday, I think. Monday, twelve-thirty, I got an email from the bus company letting me know that the three sports buses that I had scheduled for pickup at two-fifteen were canceled, because they didn't have drivers.
That's helpful.
So you want to see scrambling. And last week, when she told me she did it to another district, I was like, oh, thank God she didn't do it to me.
Right.
So Monday, she did. So I was able to get, um, AA Transportation out of Rutland, they came in and saved the day. Um, of course, it cost me quite a bit to do that, but I had an hour to do that. And I talked to, they were the fourth company that I talked to, and they finally, they grabbed their mechanic out of the garage and sent him up with the bus. And then he ended up taking football and field hockey on one bus, stopped in Auburn, dropped off one of them, and went to Southbridge for the other one, and radioed, because at that point, the pickup was after four o'clock, so they could get, pre-up some buses to go pick up and then come back.
Can I, what do you need to mention tonight?
Just let you know that this is what's going on.
So, when, 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 when parents call, letting you know that, like, either there's seventy-eight kids on my kid's bus, and they're sitting in the aisle and stuff, um, you're aware. And if we have to go down to two days a week on staying after, because I can only get a bus at two days, or if we have to go to four o'clock and figure out what we do with them in between, I, I don't know. But we've got to do something, and, and I'd like to implement eliminating the chaos in the elementary. I'd like to start that Monday or Tuesday, as soon as I can work with Emily to get that implemented.
So obviously, do what you need to do. Um, can we, just, we'll just keep this as, to be updated in October? Um, and then if you determine that you have a need, um, yes?
I have a question. That minibus that's going down to Market Basket, is there any way that it can go in through Baldwinville?
It's a minivan, it's seven passengers, and four of them are, four of the seats are already taken with the kids riding it, five, actually. No way to get a mini?
Hmm?
Because you offer those kids extended day?
They're middle schoolers.
Middle schoolers.
They're middle schoolers.
Um, so that still wouldn't alleviate the elementary?
No.
No, because, no, because, I mean, I've got to take probably thirty kids off of that bus, and I only have a seven-passenger minivan.
And it actually doesn't even help, because that's going to Phillips. It's not going to, those, the kids really have an issue with the elementaries. So that Phillips van for elementary is going to Phillips. It's not going to Phillips.
So, so the one that is going down to Market Basket, does, when it's done dropping off its kids, would it have time to then go to Baldwinville to pick up for elementary?
It can't, because it's picking up elementary for Phillips.
They start at the same time.
Yeah, they start at the same time, oh, okay.
Yeah. But I, but I think that maybe this is going to necessitate some discussion on start times. Um, and that maybe, we already said earlier, you know, than, earlier than later, that maybe this needs to be addressed. We, we went from a three-tier busing system, because we had middle school, high school, elementary, high school, whatever it was, to a two-tier, about four, five years ago. Do we need to start looking at maybe a different methodology to busing these kids to alleviate some of these problems?
Okay, I have another question, because now I'm confused. So, the kids down at Market Basket, they're, all four of them are middle school?
There's four middle school and one elementary.
Okay, so...
It makes two swings, and it picks up the middle school.
Just like the buses do.
And then it goes back for the elementary and goes to Phillips.
So does middle school and elementary start at the same time?
No.
Okay. So if you change the bus that's going down...
It's not, it's not middle and high school, though. It's elementary that's the problem. Middle and high school, you already have two buses.
Right, yes.
Do we need a subcommittee with this? Because this is going to...
So what if, what if you change the minivan to a minibus?
It can't, can't fit down with Phillips.
It's, it can't get down there.
This is often the pathway, I know the road.
I do too, I forgot that, that was the issue. All right, so, but the thing is, is I can't get bus drivers, that's the problem.
We have the buses that we want from these companies, they just don't have any bodies.
It doesn't help for timing, though, because the two elementaries start at the same time. So that, that I think is what the big issue is. But I, I think, and really, the purview of this is, let's throw this back to Mrs. Geister, figure something out and come back to us in October, um, if you need something from us. Um, because something is going to end up being money. Um, it's obviously, be able to look to us for and let us know, um, what we're going to do, because this is not just an FY twenty problem. We've got a new contract, there's a whole bunch of other things. And I know that the State's Transportation Commission, I think they had their last hearing last week or the week before. They should be issuing their report, I think they had to issue it either by September thirtieth or October thirty-one, about all the issues with state busing, um, of which is, I would never use the word collusion, but perhaps, perhaps lack of participants, um, in the bidding process. Um, as well as, and it didn't just focus on regionals, there was a lot of other things too. So I'm kind of curious to see what their results are going to be, because I think this is, it's bigger than us, but we have to figure it out. So if that makes sense to everybody, we'll get an update in October.
Yes, and that's, that's it for me.
Okay, um, you want to do the lease, talk about the lease?
Oh, the lease, I'm sorry. Um, so, so we reached, we sent the lease immediately, uh, to have it reviewed once we received it. I've, I've actually spoke, um, to Mary O'Connell, um, and I just recently sent out another email. We had talked, he had some, some feedback and some concerns and some questions, and this was about, I guess, about two weeks ago. Uh, I think it's about two weeks ago, and he was just really buttoning it up. I, I don't know why I don't have it, so what I've done is I've emailed him and said I need it. So he is, he is redlined it, he's done all these things, I just don't physically have it. So, um, as soon as I do, I'm going to pass it along, but I have no, I have no update at this, at this point in time. But I did, I did send him an email, another email saying, just send it.
I think the other piece, when we had last met, we did ask, um, if the, if the Select Board would consider, should we put a temporary lease in place? Something, um, I believe the conversation with the Select Board, and I know Jeff, you're here, so you were there for the conversation, was, we currently don't have a lease on the buildings anyway, so really, doesn't make sense to bother putting something temporary in place until we get this resolved. So that was their stance on the thing, we just kind of let things go. We continue on the path we have, where the town will insure the building, um, we've got the contents at this point, and when that lease gets finalized, we'll circle back and put everything correctly into place. Um, because again, we'll also need to do the same with Phillips, once this lease is created, so that we have some documentation, which has been the crux, I think, of the insurance issue all along, um, so...
So who's in, who's in charge of writing the, the lease?
So Templeton presented us with a draft. We sent it to our council to review, and he will send it back to us for review. And we'll see where it goes from there.
So he still has it?
He does. He's had it for a while, so I sent him another email saying I need it. That's what I'm doing.
Okay, um, any files?
No, not at this time.
Anybody have any other questions with Dr. Casaband? I just want to make a comment, thank you to yourself, your team, all of the administrative staff, the teachers, everybody, for, um, what looks to be a very smooth opening of school. A lot of very positive feedback that I've seen, um, from parents and students and, um, which is super important. Um, you know, I would have expected lots of chatter out on Facebook if things didn't go right, and there's really not much of anything. So that's a testament to the planning, to the, the Elementary School Building Committee, um, to the Templeton Police Department. I know we did a fire drill out there, the fire department, just with the new building and, and all the rest of the buildings too. So I just want to say thank you to everybody involved in opening the school. I, I know we've already thanked maintenance, um, crew a thousand times, but, you know, for the kids to walk into these buildings and have those floors so shiny was just wonderful, so...
DPDW, CERT, all with the cones, every, every, um, every department was a huge help to, to make sure everything moves so, so smoothly. So it's a, it was a, it was a great team effort, it really was.
I'd like to, um, maybe just recommend, could we write a letter of thanks, um, draft something from the committee, if the committee agrees, to the town of Templeton and all their departments, everybody, thanking them for helping make specifically the opening of the new Templeton Elementary School. Um, just, it seemed seamless, and, um, and thank them for their participation in making that happen.
Would that be true of Phillips as well?
Yes.
So let a letter should go to Phillips.
DPDW has been a huge help, the Police Department's always huge on the first day, so absolutely. Yep.
Yep.
Both districts.
Okay. If nothing else, we will go on to curriculum instruction. Ms. Kalis, we have you on just to give us some information on MCAS, because the, the data was released, but it's still embargoed, which means can't talk, really talk about it. But, she'll tell us what she can.
So, I can't tell you that we've seen improvement, which is always nice to hear. I can't really say much more specific than that. The official results, parent guardian reports, as well as the accountability report, will be released in late September. So, probably, you know, definitely by the actual meeting. I can give you some more specific information. But, I did want to say that internally, we have reviewed the results with grade, with, with the results as well as the grade and subject level results, the accountability and the grade and subject. They have also been released to Central Office and principals and teacher leaders. Everyone knows they have to, they're embargoed, they're being incorporated. But, teams of people are already looking at them and, you know, analyzing them to see what we can do better, where we did well, make some celebrations and so forth. So, a lot of that work is ongoing. But, I did look at two things that we probably will spend some time on moving forward. One is map destructive response items, which are formally referred to as open response items. And those items, there are three or four of them per test out of 40 to 42 questions. So, not a lot of questions, three or four out of 40 to 42, but they make up 25 to 30% of the score. So, we did some analysis, looking at those by grade level. And in the sheet that I think is attached, it says what our average scores are by grade level, and how many points they could have earned. So, that's clearly an area where we're going to do some work, and we're going to work in this part of things of how we can analyze data to, to make some improvements. Unfortunately, with these, we don't get the student responses, right? So, there's destructive response, the students writing the answer, but we don't get those. So, we're going to, we can't really identify whether students are performing on those because of stamina or capacity versus skill in the topic. So, we're going to use some old items, maybe design a few items, and administer them, and analyze those to see, are the students whom the reports show us aren't performing, also aren't performing on those, and then, what are the reasons? Is it that they need more skill in how to structure to answer that to multiple parts and so forth? So, there's some work beginning on that, and I think that will prove really beneficial for our kids in that area. The same or similar idea for ELA essays. Fortunately, the essays are released to us. So, some of our teacher leaders in, with English have started already working with their departments to look at those released items and do some analysis of different strengths and weaknesses that students have. But, again, there's only two or three essays out of between 24 and 37 questions. But, those two or three questions count for 32 to 47% of the test, right? So, you can, you know, answer 30 plus, 30, 40 questions on a test and not do well on those two or three items, then it can really have a strong impact in both directions. So, we do have those student responses that we can analyze. So, those are two areas that we're going to really look at, that we think will be high leverage to help students.
So, October, we can ask you to come back and give us a deeper dive into.
Yeah, we can talk about where our accountability is, and, you know, the improvements that we're seeing and some other talent.
Do we have any questions that are, that will, we can ask? All of that, the school committee wants to try and ask, that would allow Kate to respond to, so it would have to be something that would be non-embargoed type. It's, it's hard, because I know, you know, we want to know.
Next time.
What is it, you know, how did, I know accountability's a little different, where are we? And, and I can't tell us any of that. So, I don't know if anyone else had any.
I just have a quick comment. I believe that this is the first year that this is the new MCAS that was released. It was a very new format of test, so there would be some, I, I can understand some, if there was some decrease in some areas, that might be reasonable.
Yeah, it's the first year for high school, but it's not the first year for the K through A. So, they've had this test in place electronically for a couple of years at least. I did see some nice indicators, and I know that our department has, and both math, and actually, you know, all three tested subjects in the high school really looked at the new test design at the beginning of last year, and we had conversations about that. We adjusted practices in the, the three departments of math, English, and science. To math and English, science hasn't transitioned yet, to meet the needs. They looked at the test design and so forth, and that is their fruit.
I don't think we have anything else that we can ask you, that you could answer. You could ask, you just can't answer. So, thank you. So, in October, we look forward to a more detailed update, so we can hopefully spread some very good news with our scores. Subcommittee reports.
Can we go kind of quickly?
Yep. I, I know all of our subcommittees just kind of kicked off, so I'm going to hold, unless anyone has an update. I know policy, we do have one we have to address. Does anyone have a, a subcommittee update that they want? Jeff, you would like to?
Yeah, I do have one quick one. The, the Facility Subcommittee did need, okay, and with the coming, we'd actually like to run it by the committee. We are looking at, and we discussed it before, about purchasing a new tractor. Historically, we've been working with the town to do the plowing, and that, we're not doing that this year. We don't have anything in place this year. We're looking at purchasing a new piece of equipment with a, I believe it's a five-year lease for $14,000. Historically, we've been paying the town, correct me if I'm wrong, Emery, or Rick, we've been paying $25,000 annually. So, this is actually, we feel a cost-effective solution, okay? Not only will it allow us to purchase this piece of equipment with some winter removal equipment, a broom, and, and things like that, we'll also be able to use some of the savings to purchase the salt material that will need to, to treat the, to treat it. As well, we'll be able to use it in the winter, we'll be able to use it, you know, year-round, actually. At this point, we are, we're, we're not sure on a housing. At one point, we're talking about renovating the shop. We don't know right now. We're waiting for some numbers to come back on a structure for that. But, right now, we're looking at the, the lease for the piece of equipment. We'd like the, the committee's approval to move forward with that.
So, just, this was in our budget, right?
Yep. This, this was the plan. This is the formal lease, and you just have to vote to approve.
So, do we have that actual paperwork for us?
We have the numbers. Once you vote, if you approve for us to go into the lease, we will go tomorrow and get the paperwork.
Okay. So, so you need us to approve a lease, we probably need a dollar amount?
Yep, there's a dollar amount right on Jeff's.
Yep.
If you want to recommend what the motion would be, so that we can.
I would like to recommend a motion of an annual, a five-year annual lease for
For what?
For, this is for the, it's for a John Deere tractor with several attachments.
That will do the plowing.
It will do the plowing.
Plus whatever.
Yeah, it would do snow removal.
And this is what we had passed our budget on, knowing we were doing this.
Is it for this complex?
Yes.
Yes.
We will have over-the-road capability. If I need to get it up to the other school, I can get it up to the other school. But, we're under agreement, quiet my head stuff. We're under agreement with the town, that the town will be plowing the parking lots at the other school, that this tractor will be primarily for this facility.
And, and not only that, I mean, what we talked about with having the over-the-road capability, it'll actually allow us to open the place quicker, as well as possibly do some of the sidewalks that need to. And James, just for your information, it'll also allow us not to close.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's all about that.
Yeah, it'll delay. As long as you let me drive it on the side.
Too many explains.
You'll have to come use it to transfer kids to get on the meeting.
So, again, the amount, we want 14,000. Sorry.
That's okay. $14,284.24.
Okay. So, we have a recommendation for a motion to approve that the school committee approve a lease, a five-year lease, because this is also new, that we have to now approve all the leases, $14,284.24 to, it's a John Deere tractor, as we had already included in our FY20 budget. So, this is not new. This is what are, we needed to do, but we need to do the formal approval now. So, I would take, I would entertain that motion if someone wants.
So moved.
So moved, and do we have a second?
We have a second.
Are there any additional questions about that? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stained, so it does pass unanimously. So, if you could just give us a nice update at our next meeting, that we've got the equipment and everything, that would be awesome. Other than policy, were there any other, anyone else have anything else to update on?
No.
Okay. Seeing none. We do have a first reading of the policy, and a lot Mrs. Kojal discussed.
It is the wellness policy, and it is something that Desi needs as soon as possible. And so, I am asking that we expedite it, and we forego the second reading of this policy. We did meet on Monday. We made a grammatical change, and we changed wording in two spots to say encourage rather than will, so that it makes it easier for people to make a decision. But, it looks really good, and we'd like a motion to, first of all, expedite it and forego the second reading.
So, I would entertain a motion to forego the second reading, because this is by policy we do this. So, we are suspending that policy for the purpose of being able to approve this right away. I would entertain, entertain a motion to do so.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Questions on that?
Who has seen this? Principals, nurses?
We have a wellness committee. Kate was the chair of that, chair, I guess, of the committee. There was a whole group of, we required people by state law. Just a little background, this did come to the policy subcommittee last year.
Spring.
We went back and forth a couple of times, and then had these last pieces to get through. And, of course, over the summer, we did not address policy at that point. So, that's why it kind of fell into the issue.
So, it has. That works.
And one of the concerns was selling food at football games and at events and stuff, and how the laws have changed. So, we're, we changed, the wording was changed, and it was made more concise, and it says encourage rather than will. So.
Yeah, there was.
So, you, so if they sold a cupcake, they're not going to be in trouble, go against our policy. So.
And the shack can still sell their mozzarella sticks and their chicken wings.
Right.
It's okay. But, we are encouraging healthier options, and we encourage that for anyone who uses the school as well. So, that was the main crux of this, so.
And it has to be reviewed every year, so.
Any other comments about suspending the policy? Because that's what we're first. Okay. So, all in favor of approval of suspending the policy, so that we can go right to approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stained. Okay. So, we can go ahead, right to approval, so.
I make a motion that we approve the wellness policy for the Narragansett Regional School District as presented.
Second.
So, I have a first, and I have a second. Any other comments or questions?
I'm fine with it, but there is, there is one typo. I'll just, I'll just, I'll just run it by Kate later.
So, could we make a friendly amendment, that with the typo be fixed with that? Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, stained. So, that did pass unanimously, so we can get this published with whatever the typo is that Mr. Marks found, and.
Mrs. Masson, you missed a typo. Oh, my goodness. We count on you.
Yes. That being done, the last piece of business is our next meeting. Regular meeting is Wednesday, October 16, 6:00 p.m., right here in the Kiva. There is the district-wide town meeting next Wednesday, September 25, at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. Very important, everyone show up for that.
Excuse me, I have a communication that was given to me. This will take no time, but it is really important. So, 1.5 million students took the PSAT and MSQT test, 1.5 million, okay? We currently have a student who scored in the top 50,000 of those kids, actually, in 30, of the 54, there's 34,000 scored fantastic, and then 16 of them, you know, went on, will go on to another round of, we haven't had one of these letters of commendation in a very long time. So, I'm pleased to announce, I don't know if you know her, I don't know her very well, but Emma K. Hughes has been given a letter of commendation to the National Merit Scholarship Program. So, congratulations.
Congratulations, Emma.
There we go. That's all. That's all. That's all I have.
Okay. Anything else? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we adjourn. Thank you, everyone.